Good evening, Monday, August eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, regular meeting of the Windsor Heights City Council, roll call.
Sirius, Joseph Jones, Michael Libby, Lauren Campbell, Teresa Harms.
Please join me, the Pledge Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance.
The United States of America, we are a republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, approval of the agenda. Roll call.
Sirius, Joseph Jones, Michael Libby, Lauren Campbell, Teresa Harms.
Item three, public forum, time set aside for comments from the public on topics of city business, other than those listed on the agenda, no action may be taken, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and keep your comments to no more than five minutes. I see no public, alright. Well, we have a closed session, but I still do not see the attorney here. Alright, I can move.
To approve the consent agenda?
That would be good, you shouldn't move forward consent agenda until you have the closed session.
Yeah, no, but I can move, well, what I'm gonna do, I can move, I can move six A up, how's that? I will move six A up. Um, as I believe we have a gentleman here for six A.
That works. Second. Alright, so consideration, I guess, so.
A quick staff report for you, um, we have, after being tabled, consideration approval of the liquor license for Super Quick Mark. We do have attached in the staff report, a history of violations, as well as compliance checks, the last check having been done. Several weeks ago, uh, citywide, uh, Super Quick Mark did, uh, pass the compliance check without any issues. Uh, happy to answer any questions council might have, we also have Lieutenant Earl Beck here, uh, who's been involved in some of the citywide compliance checks, uh, and then we also have Yuki?
Yuti.
Yuti, thank you, um, who's the owner of Super Quick Mark, agreed to come this evening and answer any questions or address city council if desired.
Counsel?
So I, thank you, because this is one that I had asked to have pulled out and considered separately, and, um, I continue to look at the history, um, of this, I understand that we're in this, in the process of, um, where we are in this process, um, I do consider, um, this to be habitual violator based on the history of this, and I understand all of the, the history and the state laws and, um, regulations, and that he's had his, the license suspended. Um, UT as a parent, and I understand that you, um, have people who probably work for you as well, right? Um, I, I, as a business owner, I get that, right, that you can do and get to control that, but you also, um, set rules and guidelines, you know, as, as an employer. Um, so I guess I'd just like to know, what are you doing to address the sales that are happening in your business? If you could come forward and talk to us a little bit about how you're handling that within your business? You can just come right up here if you, yeah.
Oh, the red light.
I, I've turned it on.
So.
We need that pointed towards your mouth so that the people in the recording can hear you.
Have to do that, okay, my bad, sorry, didn't know that. Um, so, uh, it's been a nightmare for me, uh, since two thousand and twenty-three. So basically what happened is I got busy with other locations, I opened one in Twenty-Second Street, uh, it's called Super Quick Liquor Plus Crispy Crunchy Chicken, and I won open in Super Quick, um, a gas station in Wine Street in West Des Moines, so I got a little sidetracked because two new stores came all together in the same year. My wife, you know, she was busy at home, um, I had a younger daughter, she was three-year-old at that time, you know, and she was concentrated on that, it was me only, so I was busy on other stores. Um, this store we opened in two thousand and eighteen is my second location, my first location is in Des Moines, this is the second location. Me and my wife, we worked together and opened the store, we worked together for at least one year, and then, you know, we give, we have employees. So two thousand and twenty-three, I hired a guy, he's from California, um, I, I was under the impression that he had a lot of experience and everything, and I hired him in the, in the store. Um, he got this, uh, you know, violation, and, um, you know, I, when he got the violation, he got outside the store, basically in the parking lot, or maybe in the Hickman Road Street somewhere, and, uh, so basically, you know, I knew that this is a bad, you know, I knew at that time, this is a bad, this should not happen, especially in this Windsor Heights city where, where, you know, everything is so quiet and, and, and nice, so it should not happen. So after that, I, I let him go, once he got the violation, so that was, so that's when I got two letters from ABD. I did not know about the first violation at all, which happened in two thousand and twenty-one. In two thousand and twenty-three, when I got second violation, I got two letters from ABD at the same day regarding the first violation, and the second violation happened in two thousand and twenty-third. I talked to this ABD department, I said, hey, this violation, I know about two thousand and twenty-three, I knew it happened, but two thousand and twenty-one, I didn't know, and why I'm getting the letter from two thousand and twenty-one violation in two thousand and twenty-three? If I knew that two thousand and twenty violation at the first time, this two thousand and twenty-three might never happen. But they said, you know, they have a law, they can send the letter in three-year period, they can send me a letter in two thousand and twenty-four too, if they want to, they don't need to send the letter at the same time, and incident happened. And I was shocked at that day, you know, when I got two letters at the same day, I was, I remember I was in the gym, you know, I was doing workout. And I got one email, one attachment, after three, two hours, I got another email, second attachment, about two thousand and twenty-one. So my, so I know, I can't, I'm not here to debate about all of that process, what I'm saying here is, if I knew about that two thousand and twenty-one incident, that there's a violation in my store in two thousand and twenty-one, that two thousand and twenty-three will never happen, I will put all the programs I can, I will put my mind in, in that store, like I'm doing right now. Um, the guy who, what the, guy who got the ticket to selling liquor to the minor in two thousand and twenty-three is no longer here, he's no longer with us. I am trying to do my best to, you know, my current employees to make, have I pledge I pack certification. I am personally investing my money to do the secret shopping, you know, I have a guy who go there randomly, ask for ID, make sure that they ask ID, if they don't ask ID, I give them two chance, and after that, I have let them go. So the secret shopper guy go there, like, maybe like, uh, twice a month, and it's not only the Windsor Heights location, I have a five locations, so they go all of the five locations to make sure all of my employees are asking for ID. I'm also making sure, I'm personally going there every day, talking to employees personally, and making sure that this is not happening, I'm stand there for at least two, three hours to, to see if anybody comes, you know, any underage girl or guy comes to the store asking for any tobacco or liquor. The reason I'm doing that, because if they are selling it, they will come, you know, in that couple of hours period, you know, but nobody is coming when I am there, nobody, I am making sure that, you know, they're asking ID. Um, if someone come here and more than, like, let's say thirty years old, and they are asking ID or not, I, I also make sure that part, so basically, I'm putting all of my efforts, all of my time into this location, to make sure that this incident never happen again. Um, so, but I have to move around like some of the locations, and it's not only the Windsor Heights, it's, uh, it's, it's my second location, it's very important, but I have other locations where I am selling liquor too. So I have to follow, I have to, I have, I'm using all of those steps everywhere, you know, all the locations I own. So I packed I pledge training certifications, secret shoppers, you know, the guy who I hired, he goes there, and calling and checking every day, and, and following up with them, and to see, you know, what's going on, those are my main steps right now, what I'm putting on this, on this location, to prevent any sales to the minor.
So you, I, I just want you to understand, so this is, you're literally in my backyard, right, like, I live just behind the creek over, over there. Um, and I will tell you, as a, as a parent who my child has purchased under the age of twenty-one, and your store is known, it is known.
It was, yeah, like I said, in two thousand and twenty-three.
No, but you have, you have violations since then.
Um, in two thousand and twenty-three, I have one liquor violation.
Um, twenty-four, I see incident.
And tobacco, I think this list, this list is liquor and tobacco.
In two thousand and twenty-four?
Oh, I'm sorry, that was a past compliant, there, I'm sorry, we've had reports of parents calling our police station to report.
I, I, I'm aware of that, uh, because I remember one lady from ABD came to the, came to the store, I talked to her on the phone, and, um, you know, she told me about this incident, she said, you know, we're getting complaints about this location, and, uh, that was, uh, you know, right after that, we got this, uh, that was in two thousand and twenty-three, when the, when the person from ABD came, and right after that, we got, uh, you know, this violation to selling liquor to the minor, and then, you know, like I said, twenty, I got two emails, I'm sorry, I'm bringing this up because it's very, very important, I didn't know I have a first violation at the store, if I knew this thing, it will now, I will put myself on the cash register and work by myself to avoid any future problem, but anyways, what happens, I mean, I could not, it happened at that time, and I paid the price for that, and my store was closed for one month, you know, and, uh, since then, it doesn't matter, nobody is coming inside the store, you know, who's under twenty-one, or even though they're more than twenty-one-year-old, we are checking their IDs, we're making sure that we're checking their IDs, and we're making sure that if it doesn't happen, that guy would no longer be working for us. You know, and that's why I put the secret shopper program over there to make sure that, you know, at least from my side, I'm sending someone to make sure they're checking IDs, you know. Um, the, the, the liquor violation happened in two thousand and twenty-three, you know, um, and then, you know, there's no liquor violation after that, as far as my.
Tobacco violations.
For tobacco violation, I think it happens, I don't know what happened, it's two thousand and twenty-four, I believe it happens.
You just had one in March of twenty.
Two thousand and twenty-five, yes, yeah, this March, we had one violation for tobacco, but, like I said, you know, it's, it's, it's a liquor is my, right now, I know tobacco and liquor is the same thing, but since that's two thousand and twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-three violation happened, you know, I'm focused on this thing as far as the liquor concern, and I'm more concerned about liquor and tobacco right now, so that's what my goal is, you know, and I'm trying my best to not this happen in the store, you know, I, if I work by myself over there, I can hundred percent sure, and I'm, my employees over there working right now, I am doing my best to check them, to make sure that nobody comes inside the store who is under twenty-one, whether for the liquor or tobacco. And that's my goal right now, and that's what I'm trying to do, and I, I am, I'm putting all the checklist points, whatever I can, you know, to make sure that incident won't happen again. So, you know, like I said, you know, they are certified, I'm telling them to do certification, they're doing certification, the guy who are working right now, he's already certified, you know, like I said, I'm, I'm going by myself in the location, in the store, at least couple of hours every day to make sure that if I see anybody coming inside the store who's under twenty-one or twenty, at least who looks me younger than, you know, supposed to be, I am telling them, this is, you know, you do check ID, did you make sure you check ID or not, can you, did you, did you ask for ID or not? I'm watching my cameras, my wife is watching this camera at home to make sure, you know, whether they're asking for ID or not, you know, anybody who comes inside the store who is at least twenty-five, below twenty-five, looks like it, you know, thirty years, look, below thirty, looks like it, we just wanna make sure they check ID, and we're doing everything we can for do that. I mean, watching cameras, you know, everything, so that's, that's a person, that's what I am doing right now to avoid this thing in, any in the future.
Yuti?
Yes.
Um, you and I have known each other for a long time.
Yes, I know.
Um, the second store that you opened also joined the Windsor Heights Chamber at that time.
Yes.
And, uh, and I know we were grateful.
We were, we were, we were a member of Chamber of Commerce for at least three, two, three years, you know.
Yeah. Um, you mentioned you have cameras in the store.
Yes.
So, and those, do they record as well?
Yes.
Okay.
They record, they have audio and video recording, so we can listen, you know, what's going on, we can, you know, watch what's going on. And it's all live twenty-four hours. So that's the, that's what we are, you know. Personally, this is my, uh, second store, um, I opened in two thousand and eighteen, and this is my, you know, dream store, basically, I opened a lot of stores after that, but this store was my hard work, you know, payoff store, basically, I saved some money, and I bought this store, you know, I didn't have any loan on it, I didn't have anything, because I, whatever I made, I spend on this location. And it was like a baby, now it's like grown up, you know, when I took it over, it was very small, sales-wise, number-wise, the guy who was doing, by the, the guy who owned that store at the time was doing only wholesale liquor sales. So I took it over, I make it like a nice, you know, store with all the nice stuff, inventory-wise, I increased, so this is a very, very important store for me, more than all of other locations, you know. Uh, because you can say like, uh, you know, I was in the business, and I bought this store because I remember my father-in-law doesn't want me to buy this store because he thinks it's behind the hospital, like the, you know, the, the, it's not like visible on the street, so everybody was saying, no, you know, you can buy, but I took the risk, and I took it over, and it's really, really important for me to have this location, um, and I am a promise to do anything I can to avoid or to not have this issue again. That's all I can say.
Yuti, um, there's some stores, I'm thinking of, I think, Target, when anyone purchases alcohol, um, they have to scan the back of their driver's license.
They do, yes.
Um, is that something that your point of sale?
Yes, no, not, yeah, point of sale could require, uh, and I can, if this is a condition you want me to do have, I can do it tomorrow. Uh, but I, what I'm, what I'm saying is that we have an app from ABD, which, uh, you know, we have to scan, we can scan the ID. Uh, when they show us ID, we have to scan it, and it's for sure verified, and then we can proceed further.
Sure.
So we have two options to do that, you know, I trust ABD app more than my barcode, you know, anybody can give the ID, and you can scan it and bypass that. Um, bypass that pop-up message, you know, on the screen.
Okay.
So, but this ABD app is, is more important than, I mean, that's what my thought is, but.
I just, uh, just curious, because I know, um, if the point of sale requires it, and they don't have a, a ID to scan, then they can't make the purchase.
Yeah.
Um, so knowing that that's a capability that could be turned on is, is good to know.
We have one precautions, like I said, ABD app, we can do the second one too, if it's, if it's, if it's really, I mean, I feel like, you know, ABD app is more than enough, but we can turn this on. I had the situation in the past where we turned this on, and then, uh, basically what's happening is they're bringing someone else ID, and then, you know, the cashier is scanning it.
Sure.
Um, so there's an, so it's, it's a basic, right now, what I, the situation which I am in right now is a one-to-one thing, you know. It's like a making sure, at least they're not, not inside the store, but not in the parking lot. That's the main, main thing we are working on right now, not in the parking lot even, we can, we're watching the camera from the, in the, so we have two cameras in the parking lot, this side, on the Sherdwood Forest, uh, uh, what is, um.
Manual pathway.
Yes, on that side, and then one on the street side, so we, when we see a skid coming from the car, you know, we, we make sure that car doesn't come again in the parking lot. We, we, we're just trying to our best, you know, to avoid, it, it didn't happen since, uh, you know, two thousand and eighteen, it, it happens in two thousand and twenty-one, which I was not aware of, then it happens in two thousand and twenty-three. Two thousand and twenty-one incident happened, you know, my guy didn't even sell me that. And I didn't get any letter from ABD, I got that in two thousand and twenty-three, when second violation happened. So I fought for this, uh, you know, very frankly, I was shocked, you know, why they took two years to send me that letter for first violation. And I know I cannot fight with ABD, I have no power, I have no money to do that, you know, so I have to accept their, um, I have to accept the, whatever they have to, you know, say, so I have to shut down my store for thirty days because of the second violation.
So kind of go, going back to what Councilmember, uh, Campbell said, so do you require the scanning of the, the back of the ID for every purchase that goes through the ABD as you were saying?
No, 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 so.
Or does it have to be, could you tell the clerk that anybody that looks under the age of sixty needs to have it done?
I love it when I get carded something.
My day when I get carded because.
I, it's just an investment I need to do, which I am willing to do it, I am not, I'm not gonna say no, I'm willing to do it, and I will do it, it's an investment, I have to buy a new scanner, which is not a big deal, but this is software which I need to update in my POS to, to do that, so I am willing to do that from today onwards, or tomorrow, I need some time to talk to the POS company to do that. And it will just help me, it just, it will just, that's, that's not a big deal, you know, it's, it's a, it's a scanning the item, and it'll pop up the message, and it will do it. You know, but what I was doing it before, making sure, asking ID, and check the ID with the ABD app, so ABD app has a scanner which you scan in the back.
That, that's the thing that I was wondering if you required on every purchase, not like the Target's. DOS sales, you know, um, just, were you using the, the alcohol bureau's, um, scanner, using their app? Like, is that a requirement that the clerk, if I were to go in and purchase alcohol or tobacco, that my ID would be scanned, it would go through the, the alcohol board's um, software system, and then it would say, yes, I'm, I'm old enough to purchase, or whatever the case.
I understand your question, and I totally understand what you're saying, so the, since this trouble happened, our goal was to make sure no minor come inside the store. If you come in the, inside the store, you know, maybe not your ID is getting checked by that I ABD app, but our goal was the minor, like, the people who are under twenty-one-year-old, that was the main thing, they were bringing fake IDs, they were bringing IDs which were out of the state, like Arizona, like Missouri, Nebraska, so we checked those IDs specifically in the, in the app to make sure, we tell them, hey, this is a fake ID, never come back again. Never come back again, that was the first priority for us at that time, until now, but if this is some, this is something we can do, you know, and I will love to do that, if it's, if it's from tomorrow onwards, I can talk to my POS, upgrade the POS, and have a scanner, I have to order a new scanner, it's like three hundred dollar scanner, which will scan the ID, and it will pop up the message on the POS, and then you can proceed further, but at, until this moment, the goal was to not have those kids come inside the store. You know, personally, I was there one day. I might have a video in my phone, I was there one day, a girl, a guy, a girl came in the store, asked for liquor, I asked for ID, she gave me ID, and ID was two thousand and seven, I took the ID and put it back. And I said, you know, bring your parents, and I will give them their ID, but basically what I'm trying to say, that was my, the, we were in the, in that area where we, our focus was on that perspective, on that process right now, like, not having them come inside the store, not having them come even in the parking lot. And what you, what you're saying, like, I know highways do that, welfare do that, you know, they'll say, those, those guys do that, and I'm okay to do that too, you know, I will ask the software company to update the software and scan, you know, have a, uh, required for each liquor sale, you know, to scanner, uh, scan the ID, basically, what I'm saying. But that was, you know, we are at the stage where that was not the priority right now, the, you know, what I mean, so priority was the, not having the kids entered in this location. Not having the kids in the parking lot at all.
To be clear, we can't, um, council cannot give you any conditions, I want to be clear, okay? Um, council cannot set any conditions as far as the, I think they're just giving suggestions.
Yeah, and then I, and that's the reason I'm here, you guys are, um, I want your suggestions, basically, I want you to tell me this is what you do, should do or not do, and this is how you can succeed in this location or in this city, you know, that's what I'm here for, and I'm, I'm, I'm not saying you are, or I'm under the influence of anybody here, you know, whatever you say, I will do it, or whatever, I will say, not like that, I am here as a, you know, citizen who just wanted to listen to you and see what's going on, and why, first of all, it was really shock for me when I got a call from Adam that I have, you know, it's good if I be here. You know, I was like very shocked since then, and, but I am not here to, you know, explain myself, but I'm just here to tell you exactly what I am doing. You know, if my actions are not sufficient enough, you know, I'm want suggestions to what you guys want me to do, do, so if, if those steps not achieved, then yes, you know, I'm, I'm, I could be, I'm wrong, but I'm trying my best to do what you guys suggest, and what I personally think based on my experience in this business, I, what should I do, you know?
Mr. Mayor? Yeah, can I ask the lieutenant a question? He's here for questions here. Lieutenant, I was just wondering, are there other stores in Windsor Heights that have failed their compliance test?
Yeah, yes.
Earl Beck, wait, please come on. Will you come up to the mic, please? Wondering. I don't need to know who, I just, you know.
Yeah, yeah, and, um, so I, if I have my dates right, um, March, we did twelve compliance checks at twelve different locations. There were three failures. Um, as a requirement of a failure, we have to go back and do a second check to see if they've remedied that, fortunately, they did, with a little bit of a education, a nicely worded letter, talking about the, uh, being out of compliance, same thing goes for tobacco as well, we will typically do a second check at an unannounced date, um, to follow up on that.
Thanks, just wondering.
Of course.
It, it, up to you if you want to speak again, I, I guess I just want to leave it as, so for me, um, I've had many complaints at odd hours of the day, um, from other business owners and, and residents that either purchase from within that area, have local businesses within that area, um, that have been in that area multiple times, I've called our chief of police to send officers out, um, all of those sorts of things for, because of complaints about activity in and around your store, I know that's of no surprise to you. So, um, I will tell you, and you as a parent, who you said you've got, you have a child, um, I have four. Um, my son was sixteen years old, regularly purchased, is now addicted to tobacco, nicotine, from purchasing regularly from your store. He's twenty-two now, he has an addiction problem, right? And so I hope that doesn't happen to your child, I hope that, that your daughter doesn't get access to tobacco or alcohol, my son was able to get both from your store. Sometimes not using any ID, sometimes using a fake ID, right? And so I, I hope that you don't get that same experience, I hope that's not your experience, that another retail entity within your community will do that, I hope that you have remedied this, not only at this store, but also at your other stores, I would be curious whether or not you do have violations at your other stores, I have worked in this industry for a very long time, and I will tell you that I understand it happens, mistakes happen, you can't control your, I can't come, control my employees, I know you can't control yours, I'm glad you're taking steps, I'm glad to hear that. Um, I would also tell you that it's not just alcohol, it's tobacco, these are, are issues, kids die from this stuff, it's, children die from this. I don't need a response, I just want, I needed to say my piece.
You want to, you want to, you can speak at the podium if you want.
Sorry, I'm not familiar with the process.
Yeah, it's alright, it's alright, there's people on, there's people online, that's why you have to come and speak.
Yeah, I, um, like I said, you know, I have two daughters, a seven-year-old and four-year-old. I actually just came from show gymnastic, I was with them, they had two different classes over there. I would never do it, I would never have, since I am here, it's changed everything, very frankly, it changed everything. All I can say is that main goal is no kids comes inside the store, no come, no kid come in the parking lot. That's the main goal, no tobacco, no liquor, not only liquor, I'm saying tobacco and liquor. And checking my, whatever I can do right now, I'm trying my best to do it to prevent this thing. I would not have this happen to my daughters, I would not let this happen to any other kid, or any other parent's kids. Employees, you know, uh, they come and they go, they make their money and they leave. I hired a guy, I mean, he was like, he told me he is a regional manager, or sales manager, or branch manager of Come and Go. I hired him, you know, and he was doing the same thing, luckily, I found him, you know, doing that. So even though the people are the best experience, they tell you they have all the experience, they work in cases, they work in Come and Go, they work in QT, they work in, you know, these gas stations. You know, but I personally am telling this right now, that this is my goal, and this is gonna happen in this location.
I hope you prove us right.
I will, I will try my best, I will work by myself, since I, like I said, you know, since I, after I speak with you, after I listen to everything, from now on, it changes more than before.
Thank you for being here.
Yeah.
Thank you, thank you. Anything else from council? Roll call.
Uh, Susan, Sirius.
Yes.
Joseph Jones?
Yes.
Michael Libby?
Yes.
Lauren Campbell?
Yes.
Teresa Harms?
No.
Alright, closed session, item four, per Iowa code, twenty-one, five, one C, per Iowa code, twenty-one, five, one C. To discuss strategy with council and matters that are presently in litigation, or where litigation is imminent, where its disclosure would likely to prejudice or disadvantage the position of the governmental body in that litigation.
Move to go into closed session.
Second. Roll call.
Susan Sirius?
Yes.
Joseph Jones?
Yes.
Michael Libby?
Yes.
Lauren Campbell?
Yes.
Teresa Harms?
Yes.
Alright, six B, consideration of two thousand and twenty-five employee handbook.
Uh, yes, there was a whole-scale rewrite of the employee handbook in July of two thousand and twenty-four, uh, at that time, uh, when council approved it, we discussed bringing it back annually, with any minor changes and revisions, these are those. These are those minor changes and revisions for twenty twenty five. Uh, we solicited feedback from legal counsel and department heads. Just a couple of ones to, uh, make you aware of. Uh, alcohol drug testing procedures for staff members in case we have off hour incidents. Uh, we did, uh, provide some revisions in there that would allow for police officers to, uh, do breathalyzer tests in a instance where our typical facility is closed. Uh, and then we noticed that, uh, with the addition of PTO time for the birth or adoption of a child, uh, which we listed as twenty eight days due to differences in the way that, uh, staff work their hours. We converted that instead to eight hour, uh, shift increments to add up to that, uh, actually, that staff report's not updated on this, it looks like, but a hundred and sixty hours, uh, instead of the days. Uh, folks that work a longer shift, uh, they could be out of office for quite some time if we went with the, uh, the day model on there. Otherwise, there is a redlined copy in the, uh, in the packet. If you have any questions or concerns, uh, staff would be happy to answer this.
So I just, as you said, it's very minor. I a question on the, it's on page one fifty seven, um, of the PDF. It's cash paid out time off. So it is, from what I understand here, the addition is allowing the department head to allow cash, um, out in increments other than forty hours, but they can't exceed, um, a hundred and sixty hours. So that would be a total of four weeks, right, of paid time off?
Quarter, yes.
What's that?
Historically, a week per quarter, so yes.
Right.
Hundred sixty.
So is this, so in the past, it's been forty hours, um, and it's still that requires them to have at least eighty hours left.
Is this such a, are you talking about?
Yeah, I'm, I'm a little.
I think it's on page fifty of sixty six in the electronic version of the handbook.
Yeah, I'm in the PDF version, I'm sorry. And it's on.
Cash paid out.
Page forty nine. I guess I just want to make sure, as again, somebody who's been a business owner and employees carry time over out and they want to be paid out cash in lieu of taking their vacation, it's really important for people to take their time off. I I believe that to, you have to disconnect, but more than that, it, there's a budget component to this. And so that's my, so I just, I'm curious on what it is, what other communities do? Where did this come from? Can we get some additional background on this?
Uh, during the twenty twenty four overhaul, we did reduce the maximum accrual from, I believe it was five hundred down to four hundred. Uh, there are some union positions that, uh, have union agreements, uh, aside from that, so they can accumulate more than the four hundred. Uh, but precisely to your point, that's a lot of liability sitting on the books. Uh, so that's why we reduced it down to four hundred. Uh, other municipalities, handbooks that I have seen, three to four hundred range is more typical than the five hundred. It seemed on the high range. Uh, as far as shifting it from forty hour payouts to different increments, I think we've just received requests over time for various amounts other than forty. Rochelle, do you have any other comments on that? Um, if there's concerns about it, I don't know that it's a big deal to stay with our current language, uh, but I think it was just trying to accommodate different requests over time.
It's mainly been because someone would would forget to do their forty hours and then they would hit the four hundred and then they start losing. So it's, it was just really a timing thing, that really Pete's on it now and it's, it has to do with the police. They have a lot of vacation and they don't take necessarily a ton. So that's where it's coming from, um, that sometimes they would request eighty hours versus forty. Um, and they wouldn't have had forty the previous quarter. So nobody's taking like all their vacation as payouts. Nobody's doing that. It's just a, a one off. And I think Pete just wanted it in the handbook just so that it was there. But I don't think if it's not there, he's gonna, it's gonna matter.
I just think it's a significant jump and I think it has potential financial, you know, implications that can get. I I'm OK with a request of something. I'm not sure that I'm OK with it going to a hundred and sixty hours.
So the, the maximum amount of PTO payout isn't changing over the course of one fiscal year, just to make sure we're speaking the same language. It's always been a hundred and sixty cap. It's just quarterly, they had to request that forty. Now there's flexibility. If they forget to do it one quarter when they intended to, you get into the next quarter, they would presumably be able to ask for the eighty during that one quarter as opposed to forty in each of those quarters.
OK, so then this could say cannot exceed a total of a hundred and per a fiscal year. OK.
But I want to echo what Teresa said, that time off is also to encourage employees to get time away from work and to recharge and rest. And while familiar with the concept, I can't seem to take a vacation that is actually a rest or recharge, but it still is important that we encourage our employees to do that in addition to using their paid time off as they see fit, so.
OK, so I think I maybe read this wrong then, which is it allows it, let's see, an employee may elect to cash out, so. So, so this yellow part then, the department head may allow employees to cash out increments other than forty hours, but they still can't exceed a hundred and sixty, so.
So past practice was once per quarter, maximum of forty hours. In that quarter, you could cash out as PTO. You had to maintain a minimum balance of eighty hours, uh, after that cash out so that you still could take that PTO for whatever reasons you need.
I think I get it now. So but my question is, so if you get to quarter four and you haven't done any of them, and now I want to take a hundred and sixty, this would allow them to do it.
As long as you have two hundred and twenty total hours, yes.
Because they have to keep at least eighty. They can't clear themselves out on PTO.
Right. No, no, I get that. It still lets them kind of be a safety net for if I need to cash out my money. I, I still don't like it, so I don't know. I I think, I think you should have to, if you're going to do it, you need to do it uh, to keep books as they are need to be kept in all of those sorts of things because you're cashing out and that has cash flow implications for our budget annually, right? And their, when does their, does their vacation, it comes with their renewal date, right? But that doesn't necessarily coincide with our budget.
It, it actually does. We budget, we budget PTO payouts every year. So the PTO that someone is going to earn, we actually budget for, um, a hundred and sixty hours of that to be paid out as PTO. We never get to that, obviously, but we do budget for that piece.
So every year, we're putting in additional in our salaries budget to pay out a hundred and sixty hours for each employee?
We do. It's in, it's actually a PTO payout line.
And Rochelle, how many people actually do a hundred and sixty a year?
Uh, no, no one that I'm aware of. Um, we usually get, well, I'll be honest, there's, we have one police officer and it's possible that he could have hit that one sixty. Um, but he is our police officer that does work a ton of overtime, always at the, he's always there. He, he might have hit the one sixty. Um, I'd have to look on my system, but, but that's not normal. One sixty is not.
So why are we budgeting it then?
You have to from a liability standpoint. It's a liability. So in other words, if everyone did take it, our budget, we wouldn't be budgeted correctly, um, if we didn't. Because.
On that, and I want the history of that over the last five years.
I'm sorry, I missed part of that. You wanted the history of what?
No, I want to see our budget of that over the last five years and what we budgeted and then what we, what we spent in each one of those light items. And then did that light item then go back to our ending balance? What happened with that budget line item?
Yeah, it always does go back into, back into the budget. If it, if it's not spent, it goes back in.
I mean, across the board, PTO is accounted for in our budget because if, you know, if one officer takes the day off, PTO paid, there's, we're paying overtime for another officer to fill in for them. So that's already part of the PTO equation. And so when somebody cashes out PTO, it it typically is out of cost savings for us, I believe, because they're just working their regular shift and getting paid that we're not paying out for eight, twelve hours and then also paying time and a half for twelve hours for someone as well. So I, I, I'm assuming that.
If they're an hourly employee.
If they're an hourly.
I was gonna say that wouldn't apply to every employee.
That's true.
No matter what, um, it's an employer, you're on the hook for this.
Right.
Given this person. So at whatever time they choose to access it, you will then have to pay it out. So you have to create a liability line for that.
I get the liability line, I, I, all of those things. The question is, is at what point in time? So the whole goal of PTO is for people to take their time off, right? And so that is, that's its purpose. And if they're not in, and so if, my opinion, for what that works, right? It's, 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 exactly, sure, sure. And so, and, you know, my business, you have unlimited PT, you like, you can take it when you want it and whatever, as long as it's approved, you take it. And what, there's not a, you don't get a hundred and sixty hours, you get whatever time you want. But so you have, I know. Um, and so, but my, my point of that is you, there's still that dollar. So if we're, if we're doing a hundred and sixty hours, I think you just need to be proactive in taking that time. Or if you don't take that time and you want to get paid out for it, then get paid out for it, right? Like, but don't just be, I don't know. I just have an opinion about it clearly. I do it differently than, than others.
I don't think it's a big deal from our perspective. If you prefer to have people do it on a quarterly basis, I think you can. If somebody has a medical emergency, we have good healthcare coverage, but, you know, if they have an unexpected life expense, this does provide a safety net for somebody, um, to take that PTO as a, as a payout to pay for that life expense. Uh, so that will limit their flexibility a little bit there. But, you know, it's a good reminder for people to be thinking about this quarterly, where their balance is at. Are you taking your time off? We see a lot of people get up to the maximum or close to the maximum after several years, um, to the, that four hundred now or five hundred if you're in public safety, I believe. So it was designed to be a small tweak, uh, but if it's a concerning one, I think you can strike that red line portion and we can stay with our past policy of quarterly forty hours.
So I just have a, a question on, it's either page twenty five or it's page one thirty eight of the printed form. Um, it would be kind of in the drug and alcohol testing policy and procedures. So, um, it's H and it's kind of whited out or maybe it's, maybe it's not whited out. On, on my deal it is, so I didn't look online.
Oh, so twenty six or sixty six on the digital copy.
Oh, sorry. What does the yellowed out mean?
Could you share what page on the PDF?
On the PDF, no.
On the.
It just, are you saying, where it talks about the prescription drugs?
Yeah.
Must contain the name of the, instead of doctor, it's now medical provider.
OK.
Yeah.
Gotcha. Mine shows a very faint marking there, so I wasn't exactly sure what. And then, um, my question, and these are all messed up now, so, um, I know for some of this, you talked about like, uh, medical, like the drug testing, do we take into consideration anything for like medical marijuana? Like the, the prescriptions for that? I have no idea where that's going to be on here, so I'm just going to give up.
It's in here.
And just, just ask about that. Because obviously, oh, OK, so I'm, I'm, I'm twenty eight is where I wrote my little things, twenty eight and twenty nine, so it would be, I don't know where.
Alcohol or drug physician turns for use.
Should be left bottom page. So it should be one forty one of the PDF. Maybe.
Twenty eight, one thirty six?
Sure.
It is.
That's what I'm seeing, one thirty six, the.
So just.
Twenty eight.
You know, just because the marijuana could stay in your, even your hair follicles for ten days. Do we, I mean, if somebody has a prescription for that for whatever, do we take that into account? Or is this only talking about certain, um, certain jobs? Because it says a safety sensitive position. Um, so just kind of wondering if that's taken into account so that because there's certain people here that would be able to use it, that would probably fail a drug test, but are well within their rights of using it. So I don't, and I see that marijuana, uh, prospective employee for a safety sensitive position will also be screened for marijuana. So would that make you fail or would that, you know?
I'm trying to refresh my memory because I believe we talked about THC, uh, at least at the committee level last time when we did the whole scale rewrite. Um, you're right, there are different classes, positions. So somebody that's holding a CDL, uh, they're subject to the state rules. We don't even see those results or the select the paneling for that. Uh, you know, city hall staff members who are not driving a CDL, not carrying, um, a weapon, uh, aren't typically subject to a random drug test. It would only be under a.
If they had an accident or some.
Reasonable suspicion.
And, um.
But like if they used it on the weekend or even used it, you know, the night before to go to sleep or whatever, they could still pos, test positive, but would be well within their rights to use that substance if they have a document from a.
Yeah, so typically with the testing with medical marijuana, you know, you do your first test. We require, our policy requires the split sampling. And so if it comes back positive with the first sample, they have an oper, the employee has the opportunity to provide whatever evidence that they would have as to why, and normally if they have a medical marijuana card, they would supply it upfront, so there'd be, nobody would be caught off guard. But, um, those would all be taken into account, assuming that it's a position that isn't controlled by state or federal regulation.
I just didn't, you know, I want to be kind of.
I include. They're a medical cannabis state.
Yes.
It is cannabis, not marijuana for, to use proper terminology. So maybe we should change that in our, um, in our document to on one thirty seven in the electronic document, instead of marijuana, use cannabis. Um, and then, um.
Then I do have another question of it on twenty nine or one forty two or the next page. I'll just say scroll down. I don't know what else to say. Oh, yeah, there you go. Darn credit card. Confusing me all over.
I don't want to know. All right, what page are you wanting?
So just, uh, I don't really, yeah, twenty nine.
It should be, that's the next page.
The next page.
OK.
So like. Yeah.
Where we list the drugs that will be tested.
Yeah. And now I'm going to try to put this all back together, like Humpty Dumpty.
What was the question on that one?
Um, would we change the wording on that at all?
From marijuana to cannabis.
Yeah.
Valuable, I'm just. Deal with all the drugs tonight.
Or could we put a slash and use both terms or something?
I'm, that's fine with me.
What a flash.
You want to both. Cover all bases. Got it. OK.
Everybody settle on the PTO issue.
I'd like that line to be struck, but.
I, I, I get the, the concern about it as part of our, you know, budget. I think we want to be mindful of the, the ways that we are competitive as an employer are some of those perks that we have as employers, like half days on Fridays or whatever. And I think just changing something really quickly could, um, have negative consequences for our.
Have negative consequences for our staffing capability.
We don't operate today.
Oh, the, the move from, I thought you meant strike it altogether. You just mean the, the change.
The change.
Because I, I'm confused about the change, I'm gonna be honest.
It lets them collect it at any point in time.
Not just quarterly.
Not just quarterly.
Okay.
So they can do it all at the fourth quarter if they want.
So they could do it all December first. So they'll just get taxed more if they take it all at one time. Because they'll get paid out more. So I mean, the, the employee will be hurting if they do it all at one time, cause the taxes. You'll pay more in taxes if you get paid out all that money.
Guess it depends on the calendar year in which they're doing it.
And where they are in the current bracket. For their withholding.
I don't really care. I mean, I'll, I'll go with whatever everybody wants.
I guess, tell, tell, tell us again, why is it being proposed to change it?
I think I heard Rochelle say that the chief is asking for flexibility. Because he's got folks that sometimes don't always get it in the quarter, or they forget to ask for it within the quarter. Is that correct, Rochelle?
That is true.
And how do other cities do this again?
Some cities do not have PTO payout. Um, I'd have to review.
I would tell you most don't.
Most don't.
Oh, okay. Well, then, um.
I say we just leave.
I say that it's, uh, it leaves, keep it as is.
If we're doing something above and beyond other cities and, I mean, state does.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? With that, um, with that modification, we added some cannabis language. And we're striking that line. Anything else? Do we need to amend the, um. Or was there a motion?
We don't have a motion yet.
Okay, is there a motion?
With the current proposed changes.
Second.
For the discussion, bring on roll call.
Susan Skiris?
Yes.
Michael Libby?
Yes.
Lauren Gamble?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, consideration of the second reading of ordinance twenty twenty-five oh two related to ADUs.
Don't move.
Any, anything new?
There's nothing new, just a good, quick recap for those that weren't at the last meeting. Uh, most of these changes are a result of changes in state law, uh, trying to adhere to them. Uh, the planning zoning commission did meet and discuss the. ADU accessory dwelling units changes. Uh, they determined the recommendation was to. Stay with the single family setback requirements and not make the setbacks smaller, uh, for ADU, ADU specifically. Uh, and then there is a, a change in variance language that makes it, uh, slightly easier to reach the definition of a variance. Um, as opposed to where it stands today, uh, just more of a hardship than, uh, uh, more stringent condition there. Uh, otherwise, we've received no public combat comment, uh, and there's no further changes proposed.
Anything for council? Roll call.
Susan Skiris?
Yes.
Justin Jones?
Yes.
Michael Libby?
Yes.
Lauren Gamble?
Yes, yes.
Uh, reports, um, the MPO has not met since June. MAC has not met since June. Uh, policy committee will, MPO policy will meet this Thursday. Uh, Polk County City Management will meet this Wednesday and they're gonna talk about the, uh, proposed funding method. Uh, for future budgets, so that will be interesting. Um, Ms. Harms?
Yes, um, a couple of things. So, um, on August fourth, instead of being here. Um, I attended the Our Water, Our Future, the Central Iowa Water Quality Report, um, at Drake. Um, as well, attended over six hundred people were there. It was recorded. Um, if you haven't had a chance to, um. Listen or watch, I can certainly send that around to everybody. I would encourage you to do it. Um, it has the, uh, several of the scientists who participated. Um, in the findings of the report speak to the issues. Um, that are found. There is an executive summary of the report. I encourage everybody to take a look. Um, um, certainly, uh, there are pending health consequences that come with our. Water issue, water, current water quality challenges, and those certainly aren't going to go away. And so again, I, I'd encourage you to, to take some time to watch that, um, when you can. Um, in addition, uh, uh, working with Amanda at Dart and we are going to, uh, co-chair. A Habitat for Humanity Women Build team, and so it's gonna be on November twenty-first and we'll be actively recruiting. Um, uh, up to twenty-four, uh, elected women leaders and, um. Uh, CEO types in the metro to join us to, um, help build out a home for Habitat for Humanity, so. Um, more to come on that, but, um, and then have been, I think we've got most of our, our vendors and our contractors. Uh, all secured for, uh, Windsor Wonderland. Yay. I know, right? I think that's it. Thank you.
Gamble?
Uh, shout out to Councilwoman Skiris who led our August fourth meeting as mayor pro tem. And with council member Libby joining remotely, Susan had to motion or second and act as mayor for most of the meeting, and she did a great job, so. Fine work. Um, I attended Dart on the fifth. Reimagined Dart is of course well underway and there will be opportunities for public input on the new routes this fall. Um, thank you to the police and fire departments who attended the St. Teresa's childcare lemonade stand last week. Um, they, I, I heard all about it multiple times at Pickup, um, and they were very excited. That, uh, that they had some visitors and got stickers. Uh, special events committee met on Friday. Um, I volunteered with Dart at the Capitol for the state fair, um, at the, at the Capitol for the state fair park and ride. On the first Saturday from nine AM to three PM, selling tickets and helping load the buses. Thanks to all the Dart employees and commissioners who worked to make the fair park and ride. I know Joseph volunteered and he took. One of the more exciting shifts, which was Friday night, late from the fair out, so. Till midnight. I haven't heard any great stories yet, but hopefully we'll, we'll get to hear some. Um, Fall Fest planning is coming into the home stretch. We've had a few curveballs thrown our way. Um, but please be sure to visit Windsor Heights, uh, FallFestival.com. There are volunteer opportunities, parade registration and vendor registration. And those at the dais, if you haven't responded yet about golf cart, please do so today, so we can make sure we have a golf cart for you. That's all I got.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, the, uh, Windsor, Windsor Heights City podcast is underway. We've, uh, asked several businesses to be part of this, just to talk about why doing business in Windsor Heights is a good idea. Uh, Bake Shop is already, um, we've already taped that segment. Uh, Matt Kale sometime this week. We've asked Dinner Dispatch if they'd be interested in an always grocery, uh, also over at Apple Valley. Uh, Icon Water Trails, we failed to have a quorum at our last meeting, so, uh, we all had to. Vote, um, electronically. Um, and we have a, a. A communications committee meeting coming up next week.
Mr. Jones? So you probably all remember back in May, the Homeless Coordinating Council introduced the Metro, the blueprint to address homelessness. Uh, at our last meeting, uh, we made some major changes based on that. Uh, to include kind of changing up the structure of what that looks like. So we'll continue to have. Uh, meetings of elected officials from across the metro, but we're gonna do that quarterly. And the governance of what the work will look like is gonna be a little more inclusive of community and business leaders as well. And so that group of folks is gonna be called, hold on, let this down. The Housing Solutions Alliance, and they're going to meet on actual implementation of doing the work. Kind of how we, um, coordinate that and spearhead that across the, the metro. Um, and then hopefully, as we work on trying to address some of these issues, we can have. A broader base of buy-in from business and government and community organizations. So, um, if you've not seen the blueprint, I can forward that to you again. Uh, yes, this new structure will start to take place next month. Miss Gary?
Nothing on your Dart experience.
Well, let's just say after a concert, people are very excited and excitable at the state fair and, uh. It was shocking to me the number of people who, um, at eleven fifty-eight were still trying to find the shuttle. Like, you know, the last one, the gates close at midnight, so why wouldn't you like, but no, no, lots of last minute folks.
I'm not shocked.
Also a lot of people who at the last minute realized they were getting on the wrong bus, and so. Don't wanna go to Southeast Polka, you park to the Capitol and it's the last bus. So there was a few of those.
Standing room only?
Yeah, some cases.
Um, since our last council meeting, um, had the, the chance to attend a few great events, I attended the annual state fair breakfast. Had the opportunity to visit with members of the state fair board. Um, always an, an interesting group with lots of good insights about the fair and Greg Edwards attended, uh, with the Catch Des Moines crew. So that was always exciting to see him again after his retirement. Uh, I attended the Chambers Bash event, uh, where I shared a bunch of information about our upcoming Fall Festival. And encourage people to look at our website. Um, we have, since Tiffany sent out the email, we've had quite a few registrations for the vendor booth. As well as, um, the parade, uh, so starting to, to look good on our numbers again. Uh, at Wake Up Windsor Heights on Thursday, I received a tour of the new Edward Jones building at Seventy-third and University. Then on Friday, we held our special events committee meeting to update everyone and where we are with planning. I've also booked out the community event center with help from Nate for special events from twenty twenty-five through twenty twenty-seven now. So trying to look ahead to make sure that all of our dates, we can get the CEC, uh, booked and ready for us. Uh, one important update that came out of the special events committee was the Windsor Heights Foundation will be covering about a quarter of the cost of the. Fall Festival band, so we're currently seeking a presenting sponsor. So if you know of a business organization or even an individual who might be interested, please let me know. I'd be happy to connect with them. And, um, we are in talks with a, a few bands, hoping to have a contract signed soon. Looking ahead, Wednesday, I'll have the monthly, um, Metro Waste Authority Board meeting. I'll attend the virtual get to know Bravo session, um, I believe on Wednesday also. And then on Friday, I'll be at the World Food Festival Investor in, event hosted by the Des Moines Partnership. Then I'll be volunteering on Saturday at the World Food Festival, uh, at the fruit stand. And there are still several volunteer spots open if anyone is interested. You do get, um, four dollars worth of food bucks, so. So, you know, where are you volunteering?
Where do you go to sign up to volunteer?
Uh, Des Moines Partnership, I can send you the, the email, so you just.
And where can I spend the money to?
It's all across the world. I mean, don't spend it all in one spot.
Event on Friday for the. Yeah, the investors event.
Do you want me to send that to you as well? It's on the same email, so it's easy. I'll just, you just have to click here. It'll be fun.
Get some freebies, Mike.
Free stuff.
Yeah.
Why do this?
I'm trying to, to get in with the guy from Melissa's fruit stand for next year's Earth Day event, so.
I knew there was an angle.
Yep. Uh, finally, on August twenty-seventh, Windsor Heights will host the Women in Government Lunch and Learn with the topic focused on homelessness. So we'll ha- have a panel of, um, people from within the community that work with the homeless population. And we'll have a, a little, um, kind of chat about, uh, what we can do to help and. Uh, where we are currently and hopefully we'll have some more information from, um, what is it called now? The. Homeless, I don't even know, remember, the Homeless Solutions Alliance. So, that's it.
AJ?
Uh, Splashpad is intended to be back open, maybe the late half of this week, just in time for the seventies. Seventy-third street update, uh, Justin, feel free to chime in as well. Uh, Justin and Wyatt, uh, both worked this weekend, uh, do construction observations. Thank you for that. Uh, but a lot of concrete was port, put down, so Seventy-third Street between Forest up to College Drive has all been poured. And over the next two days, sidewalks on the west side of Seventy-third and the College Drive connection should be done. Which should give people north and south access, uh, to Clive Learning Center. Um, just in time for school with some of the side streets, Bel Air, Washington, north of College Drive. Yet to come in the next couple of weeks.
I've never heard. Yeah, frenzy, it just like, it was like, you're. Usually when I hear frenzy, it's like frenzy. Thank you. I can understand why.
Saturday or Sunday was five AM or, yeah, they've been, they've been working hard. Or the circumstances, we came over the last two months with rain and everything, but they, they, whenever they think they can, uh. Hopefully people understand why they're working early mornings, cause they work four early mornings and then they do other work in the afternoon to get up for the next day. Or if they work. Four or five days in a row now. Two hundred, three hundred and some yards, yards concrete on Sunday, it's a big force, so that's all by hand for all part. Yeah, a lot of concrete that's gone down.
There's a good day. They've been, they've been working hard and Tanner's worked how many weekends straight?
Worked twenty-two days, maybe thirty days in a row.
So, thank you to him as well.
Yeah.
All right. Off you do a journey.
Susan Skiris?
Yes.
Justin Jones?
Yes.
Michael Libby?
Yes.
Lauren Gamble?
Yes.